Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 19th, 2018. Roll call, please.
All five selectmen are here this evening, as well as Town Council and the Town Administrator.
Ah, Mr. Buck, Mr. Since you're the last one in, you can do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughing). My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Very nice. Okay. Announcements?
Announcements. Tony?
Nope, well said, thank you.
Mary?
No, sir.
Rita?
I don't think so.
Patrick?
We have no announcements in the file.
Really?
No.
I go away and nothing happens.
No, they won.
Okay, very quick for me. Relay for Life is this coming Saturday, I believe it's an all-day affair, starting about eight o'clock in the morning and going to 11 o'clock at night. It'd be very good if the town would come out and support this particular event. And Wareham Historical Society, their Antiques Fair, I've got notice for July 4th. I think it starts eight o'clock in the morning. There's also a car show this year again. And that's all I have.
Okay, Board comments?
Tony, anything else? Mary? Rita?
Next week.
Okay. Patrick?
No, I'm not going to answer these. I got two emails this week about the 40B situation, and how we were talking about trying to change our district from one to the other. And neither one really seems to understand it. So I've reached out to them by phone calls, and I'm going to try to alleviate it that way. And if not, then I'll have to try to come up with some method to let people know, because it was a little confusing, the way it was disseminated.
The only thing I've got for the public, again, we talk about transportation and obviously the commuter rail for Fall River, New Bedford, with the possibility of the piece going to Wareham as well and down to Buzzes Bay. The CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Program for the state of Massachusetts, they've had their hearings. That plan goes to 2023. This is the plan where they go out for bonding, et cetera, for monies, in order to actually do these programs. I attended two of the meetings and registered some information with them. My concerns, one is that the basic Phase One of the plan is $850 million rounded off, but yet the actual CIP plan only shows about $300 million in bonding available. So I question how they're going to come up with the other $500 million with a due date of 2022 to actually have the project up and running. And I also put in a request for the, what I call the Old Colony Line, which is the line that comes down to the Cape Flyer to be included in the program. We'll see how it goes, but just so everybody understands, this is a long, drawn-out affair. It's going to take quite a while. Patrick made a quick comment about, which happened last week, on the 40B and how we go into our area, et cetera, everything else. I've asked through the Town Administrator, to Ken Buckland, Director of Planning and Economic Development, to go back and get a background information of actually how everything is put together. I believe, from what I've looked at, is this goes back to how the state and the federal government gerrymans the districts and how you fall into it. And if people remember quite a ways back, when we had Representative for the Federal Government, Barney Frank, his territory went from a piece of Boston through Newton Brookline all the way down here, which is really...
Like a sickle.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how they even figured that one out. And I think that's how we got in originally. So we'll look at it and see what it is, because I don't think we, without making any real commitment, it's very easy for us to change where we're at. So we need to find exactly what everything is. Yeah, just an act of Congress. That's not a problem these days. That's all I have today.
About it.
Thank you.
All right, Citizens' comments?
Anybody? Come on up. How are you today?
Um, the comment about this 40B is, you know...
Why don't you sit down?
Yeah, you gotta...
Sit down?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta almost eat those microphones for it to catch you, so...
You might have to eat them.
Speak right up.
You know, I've lived in Wareham for about five years, and it's a nice area, but it's not Boston. And to have Boston market rents in Wareham, I think is ridiculous. And it does affect me personally, I don't need to go into my personal life, but I would like to see that changed. Whether or not it happens, but I think it's a very good idea, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to...
What's your name for the record?
Susan Greber. I'm also here for another reason, too.
Oh, okay.
But I'll wait for that subject to be called on.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Let's go into the appointments, because we, hearing is posted for 7:30.
Appointments? First, I have, and I'm doing these the way they're in the folder, so...
I'll whack a little bit.
All right, so first, we have a Constable, Joseph Latimer, 388 County Street, New Bedford. I move that we appoint him as a Constable, for a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions, the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Next, I have some, looks like, looks like these are all conservation. Looks like there's three for the conservation. Sandy Slavin, I'll do that one first, because I know you're going to probably...
Have to abstain.
Okay. All right, so I move we appoint Sandy Slavin, 36 Oak Street, Wareham, Conservation Commission, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Any comments?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, one?
Thank you.
Okay. 4-0-1.
You're welcome.
She...
Not that that might ever happen.
Well, it's because she didn't come up for Citizens' participation. (laughing).
It's been very nice and quiet so far today. Let's leave it that way.
All right, come on.
Still mellow.
Yeah. Let's not announce our bribery in open session, okay?
Let's not get going.
All right. Mark Carbonee, 4 Marsh Ave, Wareham. I move we appoint him to the Conservation Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Second, but I got a question. On the website, it shows him as an alternate.
He is an associate.
Okay, okay, then I make an amendment to make him an Associate member.
Now, the next question is, some Boards' associates are one year, some year, some...
This is one year.
So we're going to have to change the term back to next year.
The term, we have to, doesn't he have to withdraw the force motion?
It's 2019. Yeah. It's 2019.
Did it say 2019 in there?
Yeah.
2019, yeah.
Oh, it did say that. Okay, I'm sorry, I misheard that. All right, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Tony, you want to have him go back and say...
I'm going to carry your original motion.
You want me to do it again?
Yeah, withdraw, withdraw.
Withdraw your motion, withdraw the second, please.
Yeah, okay. I move that we appoint Mark Carbonee to an Associate membership of the Conservation Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions, the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I move we appoint Mary Taggett to the Conservation Commission as a full member for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I move we appoint Dr. Thomas Gleason to the Board of Health, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
I believe Tom is, I think he's an Associate member, because it's one year again?
Um, it does say one year, so, but it doesn't say Associate, though.
I think he is, though.
I'm going to put it on there. I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, because those are three-year terms.
I think you're right.
Motion as corrected. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
All right, next is Cheryl Knapp, to the Historical Commission, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
That's a regular term.
Yeah.
Historical Commission.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions, the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Jennifer Gaddy, to the, to the, to, excuse me, to the Recycling Committee, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any questions, the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Charles T. Deblin, 4 Cobblestone Drive, Buzzes Bay, Mass, as a Constable, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Any question from the Board? None heard. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Jennifer Gaddy, to, to the, to the, to, excuse me, to the Recycling Committee, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any question from the Board? None heard. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Okay, so that's it.
Let's go down to town business.
Yeah, let's go to the license permits.
Oh, wait a minute, we have those people here? Anyone?
Yeah, we have 99 here, I'm not sure. The other one we have also...
We'll do the liquor licenses.
Mr. Curry is here.
Liquor manager changes?
Yep.
Let's do those. All right. Application for 99 West LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, for a change of manager.
It's all there, I went through everything.
Hello. Hi, how we doing?
Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name's Peter Kelly. I'm the new General Manager at the 99 Restaurant in Wareham at 40 Rose Brook Place. And I was prior in Fair Haven, and then I was the General Manager at the location in Easton before that.
And you, what's your name again?
Peter Kelly.
Peter, okay, yeah, all right, that's right. Okay.
So I did have the liquor license in my name at the Easton location as well.
Have the tips, everything's there.
Oh, yeah, everything's here, I already looked at it earlier. So, I move we authorize the change of manager, 99 West LLC, DBA 99 Restaurants and Pub, 40 Rose Brook Place, Wareham, to Peter G. Kelly, as the change of manager for an all-alcoholic, annual, all-beverage license. And he's still, we still have the stuff for the ABCC here, too.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions, the Board?
No.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Probably pick up tomorrow or Thursday.
What's that?
Probably pick up the new license tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay, perfect, I'll be down.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Curry. Have a good day, guys.
Thanks.
Steve, come on down.
Oh, this guy.
This is, this guy.
Oh, this guy.
I'm going to deny this guy, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, um...
All right, this is for a change of manager, yeah, yeah, we should probably all sign that, yeah. Change of manager for the Kremisit Tribe, 156 Improved Order of Redmond, DBA Kremisit Tribe, number 156, 745 Main Street, Wareham, 02571.
Smile.
There you go. All right, since he smiled, I move we approve the change of manager to Steve F. Curry, for the Kremisit Tribe, 156 Improved Order of Redmond, Kremisit Tribe, 156, 745 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. For, it's an all-alcoholic beverage license.
Second.
One question.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Go ahead.
What's been improved?
The food menu.
Okay. Want to talk about it?
Yes, the current manager is, now, Mr. Suzer is retiring, and maybe moving out of state with family, because his family down south. So with our upcoming events and the annual liquor license renewal that's coming up at the end of the year, we felt it was a good time now to have that change of manager.
And menu.
So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Your wife said okay? I didn't think so. Okay, all set. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. You're all set.
All right, thank you.
Wednesday, Thursday should be ready for you.
Thank you very much.
He knows where to go.
I know he does.
We have no requests for signs.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that two to three projects that we were talking about...
What I'm looking for is if everybody has something they want, we'll put it in, they will come back in a week or so and figure out what we can actually do.
All right, so we should get working on that, then.
Just a question about that. Is that two or three projects for the whole Board to engage in, or is that two or three individual projects?
No, the whole Board, because if we can get two or three done for the whole Board in a year's time, then we're doing a lot of work, because we haven't done that in a long time.
Okay.
I mean, if you have, like, trim-on-nail redevelopment authorities when you want, of the three, fine. Patrick, if you have one, like, basically, see how we can get in or out of the Boston break, that's fine.
All right, I think that would be a good one.
Mary?
Cameras for trash.
Okay.
Cameras for trash?
What I ask is just send a note over to Janet, to the office tomorrow with each one of you.
We have, the basketball court over here, we have two barrels over there, and there's still bottles all over the ground. I can't understand what's happening. The seagulls are picking them out of the trash and throwing them all over the place. People are just chucking them.
There might be grass, two cameras in general.
Yeah.
Tony, do you have anything? Okay, I'm going to pass, because my, anything that I have is more long-term.
Yeah, well, that means trim-on-nails is pretty long-term, too, but I was thinking, we have the Charter...
The same thing?
We will...
Charter and Bylaw review. I'm working on that as well.
Bring that up probably in August. I've already put out the notice, we're waiting for people to apply.
Why sign this again?
And then sometime around September, we'll send it together.
They can make a copy.
It's supposed to start in 2019.
I'd rather just do it in term of...
Okay.
I think because of the way the Charter reads, we have to do it this way. It says we have to...
What if we rewrite it? Nobody bothers to volunteer.
Well, let's see what it is. Why don't we put it on the agenda for a couple weeks, see if we view it?
Talk about, see what we can do.
July 10th?
I've got a lot of ideas.
All right, that's fine with me, but...
Just try to get the two, so they each do what they're supposed to do.
It's in the Charter bylaws, how we have to do it.
That's okay.
I did the last one, so I don't have that.
Yeah, if you don't want to do that again.
They suggest that we do 24-hour business, and then let the Town Administrator do his report.
Okay, go ahead.
Kill some time. All right, 24-hour business, anyone? Tony?
Should we mix them up?
No.
Derek?
Thank you. Really what I'd ask for is, the Inspection Services Department has been doing a lot of things, and there's been a lot of changes coming through, and I don't think people understand what's going on in that department. So I'd ask that we bring in the Building Commissioner, Mr. Aquina, not the next meeting, the meeting thereafter, because next, next week's pretty full. Or if we're not doing it, I think that might be the holiday one, so...
I'm not going to be here on July 3rd.
Okay, so let's go the 10th, then.
The 10th, we have two more dog hearings.
So maybe we push it out to the 17th?
That's fine.
Gives him ample time.
Yeah, it's important, because he's using, he's changed the way the inspectors go out with the pads, with pictures and everything else, plus court cases, you know, et cetera, that we, I'd like him to come and explain what he's done at court recently, to understand that they are reinforcing the laws.
Yeah, he's also made some internal changes in the office. Getting the inspectors trained to go out with pads and do everything electronically, rather than put it down on paper and then, all that, so...
You want to take care of that?
Right, and that coincides with the grant that Mr. Underhill put, put forward, so it's, it'd be interesting for people to understand, when we say we received a grant for, for something, how it impacts the community as a whole.
Will you take care of that and get back to me, so I can put it on the agenda?
Okay.
Let's confirm, thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's no 24-hour business, right?
No.
All right, the Town Administrator's report, or is that it?
I don't know.
That was, that's your whole report?
We'll go back to Board comments, I got a few things to say.
All right, we'll go back to Board comments, if you like.
Go ahead.
First off, I'd like to commend Acting Chief Walczak and the Wareham Police Department for their increased efforts to get out and do some community policing, in particular in Wareham Village. Not going to name any names, but we see the same faces down there, drinking the same nip bottles, leaving them all over the place, urinating in public, doing other things like that. And they've taken a pretty hands-on approach with this problem. People being removed from there and detained, you know, PC'd when they need to be, dealt with when they need to be. You know, if we're ever going to make that an attractive business location, and a tourist destination, you know, we just can't have that kind of conduct occurring down there. And he's really made it a priority in the past month or so of going down there, dealing with some of the miscreants. You know, we hope that some of these people realize after a while that they're just not going to get away with it down there, and confine their conduct to their own properties, where nobody really cares what they do. But in the interim, I'd like to commend him and the Wareham Police Department for getting out there and doing those things. So that was sort of one thing that I had.
We have 10 minutes to kill, so...
The, one of the upcoming meetings, I'd also, I took it off for the request for next week, but I'd like to have Mr. Evans come in, reperform a request, and bring forward all the information about changing the rates for the ambulance. So the EMS rates would, feel okay bringing that forward?
Yeah.
The other item, one of the things that, you spoke about it earlier, Mr. Chairman, any chance that you could speak to, who is it, does it, Mass Coast or the DOT that's running the rail behind Merchant's Way, that's getting, getting grown in and dangerous again, so...
The only way I can get them to do that, because I spoke to a couple of different people there, is if...
Ellen, we can't hear you over here.
Sorry, if there's interference with their vision as the train comes down the tracks, et cetera. You know, so if someone is on the other side, they can't see them, so I can, I'll get a hold of Jody Ray again and see if we can say that, hey, people are coming across, and of course, they're going to come back and say, we're not supposed to allow people across the tracks, but let me see what I can do.
My preference would be for them to do it, but if they are unable to, I'm sure we'd be willing to make it look nice.
I know we can get an okay to do it on our own. The question is, do we have to go before?
Nope.
No federal railroad exemption?
For their safety.
We can, I'll get you the answer both ways. I know we can do it on our own with an okay from them, I just don't know if they have any money in their budget right now. But let me ask, I'll take care of that in the next two days.
All right. And there's been a lot of requests for the raising the water over at the Tremont Pond, where we've got the high-hazard dam, and, which is the old electrical generating system. Just to let everybody know, that's a FERC, is, comes out and does, the feds come and inspect it. They have us keeping that as a low level, because they are concerned about the gates in the dam. So I understand that it, maybe it's not, doesn't look as nice, but you're, you're talking about a $300,000 to $400,000 project to fix those gates. So until we can put some money aside and stabilize those, that's pretty much the level of water we're looking at.
I have a question for you. I believe the beaten, one of the beatens contacted us while trying to help. Do they come through with it?
No.
Thank you. That's all.
Whatever happened with the turbine refurbishment?
That, I'm sure there's a pun I could use, but it didn't work out.
Oh, go for it.
It was a damn shame?
It was. We still would like to work, where, there's some other interested parties that we'd like to speak to about it. I don't think they understood that if we were going to sign a 10-year lease, we can't sign something into saying, in the future, if they make money, the town may get some money. That's, that's not the way it works.
Ah. Contact the Tennessee Valley Authority, see if they can do something.
Okay, why don't we take a, Bob, we're going to take a quick break till 7:30 and come back.
Do you have minutes to approve?
We have minutes, we'll take about, one minute to approve it.
I can do this, yeah.
We really don't have...
All right, let's do this before we take our break. I have one set of minutes, executive session minutes of May 29, 2018. Everybody was present, present. I move...
He was absent.
Huh?
Tony was absent.
Oh, yes, he was. Tony was absent. Sorry, Tony. I move that we approve them and hold.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions?
Oh, that's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-1.
Florida pest down there.
Break time?
All right, take a little break.
People are going to take a five-minute break. Bob?
We'll be right back.[1411.04]
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're back in session. Everybody, please quiet down. Patrick, you want to call the first hearing?
First hearing is Bambi Benoit. In accordance with the provision of Chapter 140, Section 157, Massachusetts General Law, you are hereby notified that the public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectment on Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 7:30 PM regarding a dog owned or kept by you. Please find attached the complaint.
Cheryl, you want to come up? Thank you.
Move to open the hearing?
Second.
Need a roll call vote?
Roll call.
Tony? Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Hearing's now open.
So let me read the complaint into the record.
Hearing opens at 7:31.
Vicious disposition. On November 12, 2017, the dog described as a four-year-old brindle American staff named Germa, Germa?
Gemma.
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 Belonging to Bambi Benoit attacked another dog unprovoked, resulting in injury to the other dog. The animal control officer on November the 12, 2017, placed three safety restrictions on this dog. It was then brought to my attention that the owner of the dog has been in violations of these restrictions. On May 25, 2018, Susan Blair reported that this same dog was loose in the area and attacked her. Therefore, she has requested this dog hearing under Massachusetts Chapter 140, Section 157. You want me to read the restrictions into the record as well? All right, so the requirements of the restrictions are, you have the dog securely restrained with a chain or other tethering strong enough that the dog is unable to break it and of not more than four feet, four feet when being walked off your property, and your dog is only to be walked by an adult. Use of a muzzle off property is strongly recommended. The yard in the pen where the dog is contained must have signage warning of potential dangerous dog. You must post caution, beware, are dangerous dog signs in each corner of the property. Your dog is not to be left tied out in your yard unattended at any time. Those were the restrictions that were placed. So that reads it into the record.
Okay. Is, is the owner present?
Is Mrs. Benoit here?
No.
She is not.
Have Cheryl.
Rich?
So, Mr. Chairman, according to my records from Ms. Wilson, she sent notice to the owner.
Correct.
At this point, it would probably be appropriate to take, to entertain a motion, take administrative notice of the file, including the notice, and that all the persons who intend to testify be sworn to give evidence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have the notice went out by certified mail, and it was signed for by Ms. Benoit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to administer the oath.
Okay.
Would anyone who intends to offer testimony at this hearing, please stand and raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Just for the record, I would like to point out that I spoke and had a conversation with, with Benoit, and she was aware of the hearing. She notified me that the dog had been moved to her brother's home in Maine and was no longer in the town of Wareham. I informed her that I needed documentation to prove same. Today, I received a very short, brief email from a female with just her first name, nothing notarized, saying how great the dog is doing. So I called her, I left her a message and told her we were going to move forward with the hearing, and she called the office twice. I got her phone number and our caller ID, but she did not leave a message. And I also sent her an email saying that we were moving for the hearing today. So she is aware the hearing was being held. I did have conversations with her, and I believe the reason she's not here is because she feels the dog has left the town, so she didn't feel that, you know, the hearing would be moving forward.
Question for Cheryl. If the dog is in Maine, what was your disposition going to be before the dog, if the dog was still here?
So, the reason that I'm here is I would like the dog deemed dangerous, and I would like the restrictions that I recommended put into place so that a week from now, a month from now, or a year from now, that dog comes back to our town, back to our state of Massachusetts, that dog will be officially deemed dangerous, and if she's found, found in violation, then we can handle the situation appropriately.
Okay. And you'll notify the owner of the dog even though they claim they're in Maine?
Correct.
Any questions on the board?
No.
That sounds pretty good.
I would just say that we should, we should first find that on the record supplied the dog is indeed a dangerous dog, make that declaration, and then look at the restrictions, decide if we want to add anything, and then vote for that.
Well, Mr. Bone?
Mr. Chairman, that, that certainly would be an appropriate course of action. It might be worth just having the witness give a summary of the testimony that she would offer so that you could support those findings.
So the, the first incident that we had back in November, I, November 12, I wasn't the responding officer, but somebody from our department did respond, and they did note that there was a puncture wound to the dog that was attacked. So we did have evidence of that. We also have a bite report from a hospital verifying that the dog was bitten, that there was a puncture to the skin, and that it was Bambi Benoit's dog. The dog was placed in quarantine. She did not contest that her dog off-leash, unprovoked inflicted injury to another domesticated animal. I placed the safety restrictions on the dog. She said she would comply with those restrictions, and then on May 25, she, the dog again was off-leash. It did aggressively approach a Susan Blair, knocking her to the ground, pinning her to the ground. Did not bite her, and she did not receive injury, but because we've had the, the injury in the past, because she had already admitted that the dog had aggressive tendencies, she had already agreed to not have the dog run loose and to use safety precautions, and then, you know, just a few months later, she was in violation. I would say that through the state law and our local bylaw, this dog would qualify to be deemed dangerous, and I'd like to put all of the restrictions that we have under the bylaw, all six of them on the dog, so that if he does return, that we can enforce these regulations.
Okay.
No, I don't have any questions. I, I, I move that we've.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
One question. Will you be, if the dog comes back, will you be notified?
So I will not be notified, but I'm pretty tenacious in our town, and I keep a list of dogs that are deemed dangerous in our town, and I make it a regular process to patrol those areas and check for those dogs, talk to the neighbors, make sure the dog's not seen. So I would keep an eye out on the situation if that dog did come back.
Okay.
Just let me just, one quick thing. If the dog was still here now, would you be asking us to euthanize the dog at this point?
Negative, because the first injury was minor, one puncture, and the second incident did not result in injury. But I definitely feel that this dog is dangerous and does need to have safety restrictions placed on it.
So we need to have something in place that when, if the dog comes back somehow or another, that we get notification?
Yes, exactly.
I would make notification part of the, part of the decision in order coming out from the hearing.
Okay. First, I move that we find the dog a dangerous dog.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions on the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I have three restrictions. You said you had six.
Yes, sir. I went through our bylaw, the one that we have in place within the town of Wareham, and I would like to go with all six of those.
Could I have it? Thank you. All right, so I move that if the dog returns to the town of Wareham, that, and Ms. Benoit made aware that she must notify us immediately, okay? And that when not under direct control of a controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building, vehicle, or secured and locked enclosure. Two, the dog may only leave owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash of not more than four feet, having a minimal tensile strength of 300 pounds used in conjunction with a muzzle. Three, a microchip or tattoo identification for the dog. Four, behavior training for the dog from a trainer approved by the animal control officer. Five, spaying or neutering of the dog unless an owner of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion that the dog is unfit for alteration because of a medical condition, the owner of the dog shall cause the dog to be altered so that the dog shall not be reproductively intact. That's funny. Proof of insurance for the dog in the amount of one, not less than $100,000 must also be posted. I move that we, we make those, those requirements.
Second.
Second by Tony. Motion by Patrick. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, but just do that, then I'll do the roll call.
Sorry.
Either way. Tony?
Oh, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick? Alan, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, we have another hearing. All right, let's start with the next one here. Angelo Mateo, 38, Restful Lane. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of Massachusetts General Law, you are hereby notified that the public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectment on Tuesday, June 19, approximately 7:30 regarding the dog owner, owned or kept by you. Please find attached the complaint, and it'll, it'll be served here in, what do you call it, in room, room 320. All right, and I do have the card, the card and so on, I'm making note of the card. And then, let's see, the complaint says vicious disposition. Will, the victim, victim Damian Pedigil?
Actually, there's a correction to that.
Okay.
The report that I initially got, the bite report from the veterinarian hospital, had him listed. The correct name for the victim is Shannon Bamford.
Shannon. Can you spell the last name?
B-A-M-F-O-R-D. Shannon Bamford. I apologize.
Bamford, okay. Report that on May 13, 2018, at around 5:00 PM, she was walking her Yorkshire terrier on a leash when a black dog charged them and began attacking her dog. Described as a small brown Yorkie named Snooki, her dog was reportedly attacked. And while the, this isn't funny, but it, you know, it just, you can't help it. Attacked, the owner tried to protect her dog. She also was bitten and broke, broken her finger. She stated that while the, the attack was happening, she screamed for help, and when she grabbed a shovel in an attempt to protect her dog, a man later identified as the attacking dog's owner, Angelo Mateo, came outside from his house and grabbed the attacking dog. She stated that he did not check on her or her dog before going back into the house and slamming the door. She had to go to Toby Hospital and be treated for her broken hand and dog bite. She was given the first round of rabies shots. Her dog was transported to Cape Cod Veterinary Specialists and treated for multiple bite wounds. Okay, that's it. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Tony?
I do it both ways. And roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan, yes.
All right. Are we going to swear everybody in?
Would all those who intend to testify at this hearing, please stand and raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you, may be seated. All right.
Okay.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
All right. Can you give us a synopsis?
Well, I would like to note that I reached out to the victim by telephone, text, and I thought that she was going to make it here, but it appears that she's not here at this time. There's a couple of things I would like to point out. So I actually was not there to see the incident, so I have what the victim told me, and then I have what this gentleman told me. What I do know is that I've never had a history with this dog in the past. I've never had any complaints, not even a loose dog, that I did speak to several of his neighbors, and I was told that the dog has never been seen loose or off the property. I was told by his next-door neighbor that, and the neighbor said that he doesn't really know the gentleman, he didn't even know his name, so I don't feel there was any bias there, that the fence had been damaged recently in a windstorm, and that he believed that they were not aware that the fence was damaged. So as far as I know, by both telling me the same information, this gentleman let his dog out in his fenced-in backyard, and that the dog broke from the fenced-in area and went after the victim's dog, that the victim, the dog wasn't aggressively acting towards her, that she was bitten, injured, trying to protect her dog. But however, the dog does show that it has dangerous aggressive tendencies. It did attack the small dog. It did inflict injury in the small dog. A human was injured in the incident, but I do feel that taking into consideration there's been no past history, taking into consideration that he didn't just intentionally let the dog loose, that it was accidental, that I want to work with him, and I have selected a few of the precautions that we have under the dangerous dog that I would deem necessary to prevent a future incident. When I went to speak with this gentleman, he was very cooperative. He was very empathetic. He had just recently moved to the area. I told him that the dog had to be licensed to our town. He immediately went and licensed the dog in the town. He seemed like he was very compliant. As soon as he got notification, he wanted to know what he could do to prevent the incident. So I feel that he's somebody who's very cooperative and that we could work with, but I definitely feel that the dog has aggressive tendencies and should be deemed dangerous.
All right. Mr. Mateo, what say you?
I was unaware of the situation. I, you know, I wasn't able to hear anything that was going on. When the victim, you know, banged on the door and asked for help, I immediately came outside to see what was going on. That's when I saw my dog, you know, involved an incident with her dog, so I brought my dog inside to secure him inside. I came back outside. The victim and the dog were gone, completely out of my view. I waited around on my front porch for about 30 minutes, you know, maybe thinking authorities would come. No one showed up. I did speak with the ACO the following day. Once she came over, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, I was concerned. I wanted to make sure everything was all right, you know, and exactly what I can do, you know, to make sure that we're compliant. This has never been an incident with him in the past. You know, I've had him for two years. He's a rescue dog from New York City. You know, it's, you know, he's a companion. He's a pet. He's not, you know, an aggressive dog. He's not a guard dog. You know, he's, he's a pet. I was unaware of the fence at the time. You know, I had failed to do a perimeter check recently to see if everything was intact. Since the incident's taken place, I've reinforced the fence with new chicken wire. We have new posting up that submitted into the ground to prevent, you know, any possible looseness in the future. I mean, I feel, you know, upon a recommendation from the ACO, that, you know, I'd be willing to put him into a behavioral class, you know, so that we can, you know, not have this happen again in the future. But, you know, he's, it's not, he's not dangerous. I mean, you know, he plays with children. He plays with other dogs. He has other dog friends. You know, it's, it's, this is an isolated incident.
Okay, thank you. Questions to the board? Peter?
As opposed to some of the other incidents, you know, we've seen come up in the past, you know, this gentleman seems like he was very responsible. My personal feeling is I don't even know if we need to take action in this instance.
Okay, anybody else?
Just, do you have a, a sign now on your fence that there is a dog in the yard?
I do not. There, there is no signage.
I'm sorry?
There is no signage, no.
I would agree with, with Cheryl. If she has a few restrictions that she'd like to put on there, and the owner is more than happy to sign up, you know, obedience class isn't a bad idea. I mean, you don't want him running out in the street and getting hit or anything. You want him to stop when you tell him to stop, so I think I would go with Cheryl's recommendation.
We can do that. I guess my question is, is do we have to find the dog dangerous in order to impose those restrictions?
I think so.
I don't think so.
Can we describe him as potentially dangerous and leave it at that?
At risk.
At risk? Like at-risk youth?
Does that work, Cheryl?
Okay.
It is a second option, so I believe under the at-risk, if it goes 24 months without another incident, then he would no longer be considered at risk, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think there is.
At risk is good, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like being on probation or something.
All right, let me ask Cheryl, recommendations?
I can give you the list. I did highlight them. I believe his dog is neutered or spayed.
Yep.
So we wouldn't have to include that in it. I would like to see him in a control, in a containment that he cannot escape. I would like to see him in a containment that he cannot escape if he is left outside unattended. I would also like to see him walked on the short leash. All of these restrictions I'm taking under our bylaw as they're written, with some flexibility. You know, if we're deeming him at-risk versus dangerous, I would be fine with just making sure that the pen is not escapable when he's out in the yard unattended, that he's only walked by an adult on a short, strong lead, and potentially muzzled, because the dog obviously has dog aggression. He did inflict injury, serious injury, to the other dog, and a human was seriously injured and bit with a broken bone, so we definitely want to take all of these things in consideration.
Okay. Questions to the board?
Yeah, if I could ask Mr. Mateo, what's the age and size of this dog?
He's seven years old, and he's 42 pounds.
Okay. How high is the fencing in the backyard?
It's about six feet.
Yeah, he's not gonna get over that at seven years old, 42 pounds.
No. All right, so is there any other questions?
Go ahead.
All right, so I move we find the dog at risk.
Second.
Yes?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Yes.
Okay, so now the dog's at risk. So, and then I move that we go with the recommendations of Cheryl, and you wanna bring them up, Cheryl, and I'll just read them off.
Read them to the record. Yeah, read them to the record.
Read them into the record the way she wants them. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move when not under direct control of a controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building vehicle or secure locked enclosure, meaning that mark the perimeter and just check it out. Okay, if we have a storm, check it out.
Absolutely.
The dog may only leave the owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds, used in conjunction with a muzzle, okay? When you're off the property, it's not really a big deal.
Okay.
And then behavioral training for the dog from a trainer approved by the animal control officer. Now, do you agree to these terms?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and he agrees to the terms, so?
That's your motion, second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, five zero zero.
Okay.
Okay, then.
I move we close the public hearing.
Tony?
Just, just.
Second.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, go ahead.
So after 24 months, the...
We slate.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll go back to zero. He'll go back to square one.
Yep.
Tony?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
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 Alan, yes. It's like the three students.
Thank you for your cooperation with the animal control officer, that's appreciated.
Yeah, it's a tough job.
Yep.
Is that Gagel?
Gagel.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You're all set.
You're all set, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for being so cooperative. Next up is Laura Gagel and Paul Gagel. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018 approximately 7:30 regarding a dog owned or kept by you. I do have the cards here and the return receipt. It looks like it was signed by Paul Gagel. Okay? The complaint says on May 7th, 2018, at 6:18 hours, the Wareham Animal Control Officer was notified that a female was attacked by two dogs described as a light-colored and a dark-colored medium-sized pit bull mix in the area of the Cranberry Boggs of Paper Mill Road. It was also reported that the dog owner had left the area with the dogs, and her identity was unknown. She immediately contacted the victim Karen Mahoney, okay, who was at the office seeking medical treatment for her injuries, described as severe injury to her left hand resulting in profuse bleeding and torn skin, and multiple punctures behind her right knee. Ms. Mahoney reported that while walking along in the area of the boggs, she saw a woman described as a middle-aged, light-haired, light-skinned, medium build, walking with two dogs. After a brief period, the dogs began charging her. She screamed at the woman to call her dogs. She also attempted to pull her hands into her jacket to protect them. Ms. Mahoney stated the dogs just kept biting at her. Finally, the woman with the dogs called them off. Mahoney stated she told the woman that the dogs had bitten her, and the woman said, "Next time, I will leash them," then left the area with the dogs, never offering aid or to her injuries. The next day, the dog owner was positively identified as Laura Gagel of 8 Windy Hill Road, West Wareham, Massachusetts. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Like that?
Okay, is one of the Gagels here?
They're both here.
They're both here? Okay, could you come down and sit in front here? Everybody who's gonna testify, if you could come down, grab a chair and pull up front, whoever you are, from whatever point this is, come down and grab a chair, kinda spread Now, if you all rise that are gonna give testimony, I will ask counsel to swear you in.
Are you gonna testify?
Are you gonna speak?
Yes, everyone who's going to offer testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, may be seated.
Okay, we'll ask the dog officer to give us a synopsis of what has occurred.
So on the night in question, I was notified by the police department that a woman had been attacked on the Cranberry Boggs by two dogs, and had resulted in injury, and the dog owner had left the area with the two dogs. I immediately made contact with the victim, and the victim has chose not to be here this evening. She is aware of the hearing, we've had numerous conversations, but she has chose not to be here this evening. So I was not there, I did not see what happened, and I'm going by what I was told by the victim. So the victim told me that while she was walking on the boggs, she saw a female with two dogs, that the dogs came at her unprovoked, and that she screamed for help, and that the dogs attacked her. She had injury to her hand and to her leg, that the dog owner, the female, secured the dogs and left the area and did not offer medical assistance, that she had to find her way off the boggs. Her neighbor is a nurse, she went there, and her neighbor said she needed to go to the hospital. She did seek medical treatment, and unfortunately had to start rabies shots because we did not know who the dog owner was immediately, and that is the protocol if you don't have a dog to quarantine. So that's the picture that we have. Once it was put out in the social media, we had various people who came forward and said that they thought that the dogs lived at 8 Windy Hill. The very next morning, I drove there, and when I pulled up, there was two dogs in the backyard that fit the description that the victim had given me the previous evening. So I took a photograph of the dogs, and I texted them to the victim, and she said that those were the dogs. While I was at the location, a neighbor had come over to see if I was there because of what had happened the night before, and he validated that the owner of the dog, the female, had come in the evening before and said that she thought the dogs had bitten somebody. So the dog owner was aware that there was potentially injury, or potentially a bite by this third party's conversation to me. I didn't see any of this, so all of this is just coming to me secondhand. But I then reached out to Mr. Gagel, and he validated that it was his dogs, that it did happen, that his wife did return and thought that, you know, something had happened on the Cranberry Boggs. She had no idea that there was injury to the extent that it was, and that she left the area because she thought the best thing to do would be to secure the dogs. I have never had any incidences with this gentleman in the past, no loose dogs, no bite reports, no bite claims, no aggressive reports. So this is the first time that I have dealt with this gentleman. I immediately put the dogs under quarantine, and, you know, now we're here where we are.
Okay, so let me just ask who the other three folks are. Who are you, sir?
My name's Charles Morrison. I live directly across from Mr. Gagel.
Okay, so you are a witness in some manner or another?
I didn't see any of the incident, no. I'm here to give you my opinion of the character of the dogs.
Okay.
The extent that they are controlled or not controlled.
Okay, for, okay, and your name, sir? You're Mr. You, sir?
Paul Gagel.
Paul Gagel, okay. And you, sir?
Ron Merlo, 17 Bethel Way. I want to call. Can I use the mic, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come over to that.
Yeah, you gotta use the mic, unfortunately.
Ron Merlo, 17 Bethel Way.
And you're here for what purpose?
To give you an accounting of something that happened last summer.
Okay. Are you here for the officer or for Mr. Gagel?
I guess the...
So the gentleman that is speaking right now informed me that he had had an incident with the dogs previously, so therefore showing that they may have had prior knowledge that the dogs had aggressive tendencies before the night of this incident, and before...
We gotta get a ruling on this. We need to have counsel weigh in on this. Is this, is this something we can do?
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there are no strict rules of evidence in this case, so you can hear anything that you wanna hear and give it the weight that you deem appropriate. However, it would be appropriate to give greater weight to items that had appeared contemporaneously with the incident being described, and which themselves had been through a hearing process. I'm taking it from the gentleman's comments that that is not the case.
Right. Okay, so next we wanna hear from Mr. Gagel, because he's, what do you say?
Okay, first off, my wife is not here. Obviously, she got beaten up pretty good by social media, and she emotionally cannot handle a public hearing on TV. If it wasn't on TV, a public hearing, she would be here before you, I guarantee you. Okay? She is very remorseful. She, Cheryl called me the next morning, okay, before she came to, well, I don't know if it was after she came to the household or before, I was on the road all day, and she asked me at 11:30 if it was my dogs that were involved with the biting incident the previous night, and I said yes. My wife did write a letter and reach out to the woman. We tried to find her phone number, we got her landline number, but she wasn't answering the landline. We finally got the cell phone. The two women have talked, and my wife apologized in the letter and a card, and over the phone. I talked to the woman over the phone to apologize and also offer to pay her expenses, which I still am going to do. This was a shock to both of us. These are dogs number six and seven for me. Throughout the years since I moved to Wareham in 89, I rescued, this is six and seven, all my dogs have been from shelters, or I've rescued them from a league, or these last two were from a foster home in Rhode Island. And they brought them up from a shelter in the south at their timeshare, where they were volunteering their time. So these dogs were, obviously, they were abused, and they were rescued by these people and put on rescue.me.org, and finally ended up in my house. It's an awful incident, and I take full responsibility, because I am the owner, not my wife. I own the dogs, so I take full responsibility for the character of the dogs and what happened. Charlie here is directly across the street, so he sees these dogs, and what he will testify to is they're not vicious, okay? For some reason, they went after this woman, I have no idea why. They were unleashed, and we kind of overly trusted these dogs, and that was my mistake, really, as the dog owner. The other character witness that is ill tonight actually takes care of these dogs when we go away, so he would be a good witness as to the character of the dogs, and if they are vicious or not, and they're not vicious, they really aren't. They're just sheltered dogs that have an issue. At times, they're skittish, you know, and if you ever came across a dog from a shelter, it takes a long time to get them acclimated to a home and stuff like that. Cheryl has restrictions laid out, okay, and I've been cooperative with Cheryl. And I have some pictures of the dogs, but most importantly, I have gone an extra step to control these dogs better in the future. We have a chain link fence, but it's not six feet, it's four feet, and the dogs have been in this chain link area for 23 hours a day. They've never jumped the fence, they can't, they can't even dig there because there's too many roots in the ground. But I went an extra step with my neighbor, and we built, we enclosed the porch deck. So now, I've got some pictures here if you wanna see them.
Sure, bring them.
And like Cheryl had that.
Okay.
The porch deck.
The seminum to the thing.
These are the dogs. The other thing of note I'd like to bring up is that my grandchildren came up from West Virginia in April with their husband and their mother, I mean, with their father and their mother. The girls had never seen these dogs before. They were in the house for a week, a whole week. The dogs didn't so much as growl at these kids, they loved children, okay? So the family felt very comfortable around these dogs, okay? I was very protective of them at first, but once the dogs got to know the kids, they were fine. So they're not vicious dogs, they're just very skittish, and like I said, my wife and I are very shocked this has happened. But I can attest to the fact that my wife is so traumatized, she'll never walk a dog again. I don't think she's physically able to handle these dogs now because they're really strong. And so she'll never walk the dogs again, I will, and I walk them 90% of the time anyway. And like I said, as a dog owner, I'm really responsible for the way the dogs are, so...
All right, thank you. You know, one of the things is that, you know, I know you gentlemen wanna kinda chime in, but you really don't have any direct testimony that says what happened for this case. You know what I mean? So I'm not so sure that it's really relevant. I mean, I suppose we could, but it really doesn't...
Well, he's allowed to advocate for him. He's advocating for his dogs, he's allowed to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I guess you can say what you wanna say and do it quickly.
I'd like to say a couple of things. I'd like to start with the fact that...
Use the mic.
I'm gonna bring that over, yep.
Sorry.
My name's Charles Morrison. I live directly across the street from Mr. Gagel. We're not friends, we're just neighbors, okay? So I'm not here to help somebody out. I have a grandson that was six years old when these dogs came. We play out in the street all the time. Frisbees, balls go into Mr. Gagel's yard. I've never felt threatened by those dogs. They were constantly out in the fenced-in enclosure. Never once have I seen the dogs loose. Never once have I seen the Gagels looking for their dogs. So I don't feel that the dogs are escape artists. They stay put. They were obviously let loose on the bog. What happened was an unfortunate incident, and as far as living across the street and seeing these dogs, I've never once seen those dogs out of their enclosure or attempting to, and that's all I have to say.
All right, go ahead, sir. Why don't you grab that mic and say what you wanna tell us?
What I'd like to bring, could I identify yourself, please, just for the record? Oh, Ron Merlo. Bethel Way. What I'd like to bring forward, just for knowledge, is last summer, while I was taking three of my dogs for a walk on the bog, Mr. Gagel's dogs about 200 yards away were on a crossroad, and they turned and came directly at us and charged us. They ran right across the bog, right into our face. The black dog stayed 10 feet away, the white dog was a foot away. I had my three dogs on control, and the dogs, for probably about 30 seconds, were barking, growling, very aggressive. I obviously had some choice words. I was waiting for the dog to take another step, I would have used my feet as necessary. After about 30 seconds, the dogs, the lighter colored tan dog turned to go away, stopped about four feet away, turned again, made an aggressive venture at us, turned away, and then they both ran back. So, I, you know, Mr. Gagel has seen that transaction, so to say that, you know, in my feeling, unaware that the dogs are aggressive, those dogs took off over 200 yards to come at us, that's a pretty aggressive dog. Now, I don't want to see the dogs put down, it's, but I think there needs to be something done if they're outside of a contained area.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, recommendations?
I would say there's no question that the dogs should be deemed dangerous. There was an unprovoked attack on a human being that resulted in serious injury, there's no question about that.
Yeah, talk tight, pull it right up to your mouth.
Sorry.
Pull it and yell into a little bit. The air conditioning makes it difficult.
Thank you. So, there's no question whether or not these dogs need to be deemed dangerous. There was an unprovoked attack that resulted in serious injury to a human being. So, the question is, on what level we should respond to the dangerous dog situation? I have no documented incidences in the past. I did speak with this gentleman today, and yes, maybe they were aware that the dogs had some dangerous tendencies. I believe that they were wearing rose-colored glasses and they were in denial. I don't believe that they had any idea that the dog would attack that woman or result in serious injury, or they would never have left the dogs off-leash. And I do feel that now, that they are aware of the situation and they are aware of what can happen, that they would take the precaution restrictions very seriously and that they would work with this department to make sure that those restrictions are met and that there would be no violations. That would be my recommendation, and I would go with all six of the regulations that we have listed under the bylaw, and I would definitely have the dogs deemed dangerous.
Okay, board members, anything?
Yeah, I actually took a drive out past the premises late last week just to get a look at the fencing. I've got a nine-year-old German Shepherd female. I had a late German Shepherd male who easily blew over my four-foot fence like I wasn't even there. These dogs are, as I understand it, about four years old?
Yes.
They look to be pretty much prime of life, and they look to me like they could zip over a four-foot fence without a whole heck of a lot of trouble if they figured out how to bounce off the top of the fence. I don't think a four-foot fence is adequate, especially for a dog that has, or dogs, and I'm not sure which dog did the attacking, you know, that's another thing, too, is we're dealing with two dogs as if they both participated in the attack on the person. I don't know from the testimony that's been given so far whether one dog did the biting and the other dog just stood back and looked, but it's kind of irrelevant at this point. I think the enclosure needs to be something, it needs to be either six-foot high or the other alternative, the way I contain my dogs was I actually went to Eastern Fence over in Kingston and I got the arms that you can put on top of the posts. They're made for concertina wire, you can't use that in Massachusetts, a canated dog, it's illegal, but what you can do is take coated, plastic coated wire and run it through. That way, when the dog tries to bounce off of that, it has a lot to give to it, the dog doesn't feel secure, and they will just stay in the yard. So, I would suggest that we impose a condition for either a six-foot high fence or that you modify the fence with that sort of stuff pointing inward, so that it's another barrier for the dog to try to get over. It contained my rascal and my female hasn't even tried to go over it.
Anybody else?
Question now, the two instances, the dogs were not on leashes, correct, Paul?
I can't hear you.
The two instances that we, before us, neither dog was on a leash both times, correct?
I don't remember that incident, he says I do, but they were unleashed, yes.
Okay, your dogs were unleashed?
My dogs.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make note that we have received numerous phone calls after this had happened in regards to people, they did want to make anonymous complaints that the dogs are continuously off-leash, so we did take into effect that, those instances that were reported to us into tonight's hearing in regards to restraining the dogs.
That's one of your recommendations, Cheryl? Is for a leash?
Yes, one of the recommendations is, it's basically the...
Same as the others.
All of the recommendations that we have under the dangerous dog with a slight modification. Under the containment, when the dogs are left unsupervised in the yard, I've increased it to a six-foot height minimum per your recommendation, and then when the dogs are walked, per my fellow officer's recommendation, it would be with an adult only, somebody 18, he said the dogs are strong, we want to make sure it's an adult over the age of 18 walking those dogs.
With regard to the six-foot enclosure, it's going to cost a lot of money to extend a chain link fence up six feet. With the solution that I've imposed in my yard work as well, the arm that sticks out on top, it doesn't, I don't think it quite goes up six feet, it probably goes up 18 inches or something in height, but it actually faces inward so the dog has that additional...
Sloped.
Yeah, it's difficult, it's difficult for the dog to get over. Is that something that would...
I would be fine with that, and if you wanted to meet me at the property to make sure that, you know, we're both comfortable with what he's done, I have no problem with that as well, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and give him the option, maybe he doesn't find that attractive fencing, who knows, but...
Yeah, and I didn't really plan, with the new restrictions, I didn't really plan when nobody was home to leave them in the four-foot chain-linked area. That's why we enclosed the porch deck, to never get out there. I mean...
Look, I'll be honest with you, if you wanted to spend the time, effort, and money to enclose the whole guardian yard, it would be a dog paradise, it would be better for the dogs.
Been done.
Because my dogs have the run-of-my-yard, but...
But that sounds like a good recommendation, I'll look into that.
I think the dogs tend to get...
Cheryl's okay with it.
What is the, what is the size of the chain link enclosure right now about?
Oh, it's 50 feet, 150 feet, and back into the house.
Okay, so it's about 5,000 square feet, so if the dogs want to get away from each other, they don't have to be in each other's faces all day long, if they want to do that, I don't know if they do or not, but...
No, like I said, they've been there three and a half years and they, they don't even jump, they don't even jump for a treat, but that's not saying it wouldn't happen, obviously. But this is dogs number six and seven, and none of them have ever jumped the fence, and I've had dogs more athletic than these, but...
Yeah, well, my guy didn't go over the fence until he was about six years old, so you never know.
I remember that.
Yeah.
But anyway, I want to be fully cooperative with...
It looks to me, Mr. Gagel, that really the big problem here wasn't necessarily your fence, it's the fact that they were off a leash when you were walking them.
I understand.
And, you know, one of the things that dogs have a habit of doing is when you're walking them and you're there, they take ownership of you and the territory is your territory, and so something else comes into that territory and it's like them coming into your yard, you know, it gets a little spooky, you know what I mean? So, it seems like that's what you did to yourself.
Yes.
You did this to yourself, not to, you know, the dogs didn't do it, you did it yourself by walking them unleashed, and that's sort of what the problem was. So, I'm going to have to move that we find the two dogs to be dangerous dogs and that we make the restrictions, can I have the restrictions, please? The following restrictions. First, I move that we find them dangerous dogs.
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
500.
Okay, and then, this is, when not under direct control of a controlling person, the dogs shall be contained within a building, vehicle, or securely locked enclosure. Six feet in height or with the post will be okay, the angle arms. The dogs may only leave the owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash, not more than four feet in length, okay? I think if you do that, I think you're going to eliminate all your problems.
There is one, there is one point I'd like to make, which is if you're going to bring the dogs out of the house to the car to take them with the vets or whatever, they should be on lead as well.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, and Cheryl has recommended that they be muzzled when they go to the vets, which I brought the last time they went to the vets anyway, it wasn't the one that she's recommending, it was the neoprene one or the...
Nylon.
Yeah, and the vet opted not to me to do it, so that was the last time they had their shot, so...
All right, so she also would like to see that it's an adult over 18 that's walking the dogs, okay? Just for the purposes of having control. Have a minimal tensile strength of 300 pounds used in conjunction with a muzzle. Microchips are tattoos identification for the dogs. I don't know if they have microchips, everybody does nowadays.
They're shipped in the town itself.
Behavior training for the dog from a training approval, approved by the control officer. Spade or neutered, are they spade or neutered?
They're both neutered, yes.
Okay, so spade or neutered, so they're done. And proof of insurance for the dogs and the amount not less than $100,000 insurance for the owners, okay?
That's typically covered by a homeowner's policy.
Typically, it's covered by a homeowner's policy. The thing about dogs is like 10 dogs that are on that list, they cost you a lot of money.
There's 10 dogs that are on, yeah, that this is one of the most infuriating things in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I've got a German Shepherd and I'm in a flood zone, I pay them for the Mass Fair Plan because notwithstanding the state law doesn't allow us to discriminate against dog breeds when these issues come before us, the insurance companies are allowed to discriminate against dog breeds. So, you know, but there is the Mass Fair Plan available, if your, you know, if your homeowner gets wind of this or something like that and they cancel you and you have to go on the Fair Plan, you know, you are covered for future incidents with them, and they can't deny you for ownership of a dog.
Interesting, believe it or not, one of the dogs on the list is a Labrador Retriever.
Pardon me?
A Labrador Retriever is on the list even though there's Com, you know why? Because everybody has one, and there's so many of them, the likelihood of a bite is greater, so they put them on the insurance list. Okay, dogs shall not, the other thing, the dogs shall not be allowed to be left in the enclosure alone with other person over the age of 18. So, in other words, don't leave them on the yard if nobody's around, okay? Basically, is what we're saying there. Do you agree to these terms?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, then I move we close the public hearing.
We move to adopt these.
Oh, did we vote on this?
I don't, I don't think we voted on these.
So, that was my motion, so...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
500.
We get carried away.
All right, now I move we close the public hearing.
You really want to get this done, don't you?
Yes.
Second.
Can I say one thing before you close it? I think everyone should be very grateful that you have Cheryl as the animal control officer because we're going according to her recommendations when I personally may not have been so generous in some of these cases. I hope everyone continues to cooperate with her, you know, if she is called out to your property for an issue or just coming by to check on something that she has to enforce, so just wanted to thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, close the hearing, Tony, yes?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the great work, guys.
Yep.
All right, so next up is...
Oh, one of your pictures back.
Liaison reports. Well, we'll put them in the record, she can have them, yeah.
Just in case.
And she can have them if she wants them. Yes.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, liaison reports, Peter, liaison reports, is next?
Yeah.
All right, you okay?
If there's...
All right, we got anything else on the agenda tonight?
Liaison reports, that's it.
Tony? Mary?
No, sir.
Peter?
No.
No, I'm...
Real quick, I was at the CERP, MPO, and JTPG, which are the transportation groups for Southeast Mass, so there's a new program coming up, which is the road inventory update tool, I spoke to Derek about it already. It allows us to take roads which become basically public roads accepted by the town. We now can enter those in on our own, don't have to go through the whole process. So, basically, chapter 90 money as far as mileage and stuff goes up states immediately, and we should have the new program available to us in about two weeks. There was one comment made that any road that the town maintains should be owned by the town.
Yeah, that's nice.
I know, but I'm just saying that's what's in the...
We have a bylaw.
I know we do, just so you know, that's what's there.
That would have been like whatever due to that one.
And what they do is we're allowed to review ours versus theirs every two years to make sure it's up to date, and that's it for me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wareham.
Good night, Wareham.